I'm Maury Pete's King, serving Rockville since 1972. Dine in, carry out, or drive up window. Come and see us. Thank you, Rockville, for 50 years of business. All right, folks, I've got four o'clock, so we'll start off with the pledge of allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you all for coming. Got a busy day today, so we're gonna get right out of here.
Okay.
All right, we have minutes to approve.
Forgot to turn those off.
Yeah, I know. You got sent to us.
The sound is...
Yeah, on our phone, so I made a motion to approve. Minutes for 12-6, 20-21. I'll second that.
Move to second to approval as said presented. All in fair sound?
All right.
Opposed? Okay. Payroll, we have payroll in the amount of $175,950.76. Just got a small three in the ears, bud.
Yeah. Must have got paid last time.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we approve payroll in the amount of $175,950.76.
All in fair sound?
Aye.
Okay. Then we just need to acknowledge that we have received the payroll claims account payroll report in the amount of $49,839.39.
There's two of them there.
Uh huh.
There's also one for the $1,205.32.
Yeah, that makes sense, because I thought that was really tiny.
Yeah.
And then one for $80,205.53.
Thirty-three. I make a motion, we acknowledge...
Mine says fifty-three. Is yours thirty-three?
Yeah. Is it thirty-three cents or fifty-three? Jim's is fifty-three and mine's thirty-three.
Uh, fifty-three.
Fifty-three, okay.
Yeah, mine says thirty-three.
Yeah, you got, yeah, nope. That's what it says here. But on the document, it says thirty-three.
But on the... I make a motion, we acknowledge we received payroll claims in the amount of $49,839.39 and one for $80,205.53. I'll second that.
All in fair sound?
Aye.
Okay. All right, new business. I tell you what, before we get started, since we're here, a gentleman just came in back here that I met some time ago, and I knew he was coming tonight, so I told him when he got here, I'd get him right up to Lafayette. Come on up, Spencer, and you can stand wherever you'd like to address those folks, too. This is Spencer Derry. Spencer Derry is running for the Senate seat, now held by Phil Boots, and he was gonna be in the area and ask if he could come in and introduce himself to us. I said, "Sure, and you want a couple minutes to talk to these folks? You go ahead and tell them who you are and why you're doing it."
All right, well, thank you for that introduction. Yes, as you said, my name is Spencer Derry. We're gonna have a new senator in our district, and I'd like to be able to fill that position. I've come from Tipton County. I have three children. I'm currently the deputy chief of staff at the university. I've worked for Mitch Daniels for the last nearly a decade now.
Isn't that amazing? It's been a decade.
Believe it or not, yep. And so, in that time, I've had the privilege to be mentioned by someone who, without exaggeration, is on the list of the world's 50 greatest leaders, and I never put myself at that level, but I've been able to learn a thing or two about effective governance, effective management, effective leadership that I hope to take to the Senate. Part of that is helping move our counties, especially our rural counties, forward. We've made a lot of gains in recent years in terms of being a business-friendly state, but not all of those gains have spread equally to all parts of the state. And so, it's important that we have somebody that's willing to look at the facts, look at the data, look at the issues, and not just necessarily just chase after the latest headlines or the latest fight that's possible. That's something I've been able to learn at Purdue. And working at Purdue is, never ran for public office, but being in leadership there, we have our own waste management, our own police department, our own fire department, and obviously economic development aspect, and of course, an education aspect. And so, it's been great preparation for something like this. And working with President Daniels to learn how to really make data-driven decisions to make a difference for our communities and spread that forward. And so, that's what I'm hoping to do. I know you guys have a busy agenda, but I'm happy to, I won't, so it won't take too much of your time, but I'm happy to talk to anybody and hope to be available. And you're gonna be seeing me around, because it's important that you know how to reach your state senator, and that I'm accessible and available, and I'm planning on doing that. So, get used to seeing me around, and I'm grateful for those that have already been welcoming and allowed me to be here. So, thank you for that, Jim.
Well, I'm glad you bothered to stop by, and I really do. And I mean bother, because I know it is a bother to come to all the small counties. There are six counties, is that correct?
Six counties.
Six counties that we have to cover. And we've talked before, and our biggest concern, and we see it every day, Nick has to deal with it on our behalf every day, and certainly the auditor's office has to deal with it. We are so insignificant in so many of the eyes at state level that they're not concerned with us at all on so many issues. And it's not that we're not worthy, we're just insignificant in numbers. And so, as I explained, actually, one of his opponents, I was speaking with him, and I had an announcement thing that he had, that we're not many votes in Park County, but we're a lot of people. We're 16,000 people that ought to be considered, even though we may only have 3,000 or 4,000 people that go to the election. Those 16,000 people are deserving of some consideration. And I feel confident that you would keep us in mind in doing that, not be driven. I can't imagine anyone, whether you agree with all the things, and I don't, of all the things that Mitch Daniels did in his political life or not, I don't think you could be mentored by a better person who takes things by the neck and deals with issues as they come up, not how you wish they would be, but how they are. And that's really important for me, that we have someone in that position who would cut through all the political nonsense and see what the real issue is and deal with it for real people. That's what's important to me. So, wish you luck, and you come back anytime you'd like to come by, anything we can do to help you. I am meeting with one of your opponents tomorrow, he's going to my house as you did. And so, there are, right now, three people, I think, that have registered for, is that correct? The lady from Fountain County, the...
I think we got four.
Was it four? No? Okay. I'm trying to think who the fourth one is, but I think Tim Yocum even from Remain County is considering, I understand, is someone from Park County, I think, the bill is still considering, I think. So, it may get to be a crowded field, so we look forward to seeing you often and take all the effort you possibly can to explain to all our people why you stand for us, so we can give it a due consideration.
Likewise, I look forward to hearing from all the community members in Park County as well, what's important to them.
If you need help in us getting your word out around, because it's important to us that, not to show favoritism to anybody, but get all of your information out to everybody, so when they come, come time to make a choice in the election, they can make a wise choice that they know is gonna benefit them and the state as well. So, thanks for coming.
Definitely, thank you.
You're welcome. Say as long as you like, if you gotta hit the road, you can do that, too.
I'm gonna sit and watch for a little, if that's all right.
All right. Thanks for coming, Spencer, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we have some hand-type checks to approve. The Joe Evans, what is that check?
That's that, probably that...
Cross A, CBL reimbursement.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yes, he did. Yep, okay. So, we have that one, we have for Randy Cleaver doing the internet work, the 900, and NMS Labs 217, what is that?
Those more blood work.
Oh, okay, okay. That's probably from the...
The autopsy.
The coroner's office.
Maybe the coroner's office, yep, okay. What hand-type checks are? We have a regular billing cycle with checks, bills have to be in a certain time, then they go through the process through a meeting, we approve them. But sometimes relatively important bills come in midstream, and we have to prove it to be paid out of cycle, and that's what we're doing right now. So, we just need a motion to approve those three checks as they were presented.
I make a motion, we approve the three checks as presented to us. I'll second that.
All in fair sound?
Aye.
All right. Let me see what I got before we get into the other stuff here real quickly. We actually have a lot, a lot to cover today. We've gotta make sure we get it all done, because we only have one, this last one meeting before the end of the year, so something we just have to get done. Yeah, we can do that in a minute. So, first up on our agenda is Mark Davis with Park Trails Alliance. Park Trails Alliance, folks should mind, is a group that is working to expend the funds granted to them, five millions from the state, to create a Rails to Trails project going through Park County to connect other counties. So, Mark is the head of that Rails to Trails Commission, which is now called the Park Trails Alliance. So, you're up, bud.
Okay, thank you. One of the couple things bringing up today on where we're at, we have completed probably about 60%, 70% of what we call the control survey, basically laying out the approximate route for the entire trail. And we've got about 40% of the boundary surveys of the different parcels, about 50% complete and property purchase. We do, we're in the negotiating on the other ones right now. There's some areas, what this is about here is, there's some areas along the trail that it would be beneficial to do what we call legal surveys, which that way we're notifying all the existing land buildings on what's going on. We've done that with a couple pieces of property that we own and that we are purchasing. In this particular case, it involves a kind of right-of-way, and we had talked about that, and you guys have agreed to allow us to go on that. So, what we're asking for is, since it is county right-of-way, feel that it's necessary, and I had a conversation with Nick, that you guys actually request the legal survey. We cover the cost with the grant, which is all good, because it would be part of the trail.
Sure.
And what I've included there is a letter requesting that with the information on where to send the request to do the legal survey. There's a plat map on there, and a couple of legal descriptions of the joining properties. I did notice that I left the original, I referred to the original plat. Nick actually has a copy of it, I did not include that. I can get that to you guys via email. I apologize for not including that with that, even though I referred to it.
Do you have a template you want to use for this request, or you just want us to write a letter ourselves?
Just a letter. David, I've spoken with Myers Engineering, they're...
Is Dean doing that, Dave Myers? Is he the one doing it?
Yes. Yeah, Matt Borish is the operations manager down there, that's the name I gave, because he's pretty much, and that number is our, actually, our project number.
Okay.
That they're working under, so that refers to our overall project number.
Just so you folks understand, too, what's going on with this, we're in the process, the trail is gonna go from Rockville down to Eagle County eventually, all the way down through Calamrood, that area. Kind of like any project that makes changes in people's lives, you have some people that are avidly in favor of such a thing, and you have some people who are avidly opposed to such a thing. That's just the way nature is, so we have to work around those. It's really important that you understand that there are no county dollars going to this project. This is all grant money coming from the state, from DNR. DNR raises their money from fees, and so, I don't know what the tax dollars going into DNR is, what that one amount is, but I do know their fees create most of the funding that DNR uses on projects. So, we, and he made sure in his letter here that there will be no cost to the county for this survey, and we've had discussion before. It's very important for us, for the people who put us in these seats, to understand that we have not made the decision to spend county tax dollars on such a thing, but we are here to facilitate anybody who's trying to do a project so long as it falls within the realm of what's good for the county and or favored by the county. So, that's what they're here for to do. So, all he's asking for now is for us, that this county right-of-way property, to send a letter to these folks, asking them to do a legal survey, and then they will use that legal survey to determine exactly where the boundaries are of that stretch of land they need to use. In those places where we have people who are opposed and don't want to use their property, or they maybe have, you've ran into some where they've actually purchased the right-of-way from the railroad at some point, and they don't want to give that back, which I totally understand, then we have to work around that area, and that's what we're in the process of trying to find ways to work around those. And this just be one small segment of that, that process. So, I would make a motion that we authorize Nick to write a letter on our behalf, asking for this legal survey as requested by the Park Trails Alliance.
And I'll second that.
All in fair sound?
Aye.
Okay?
Thank you.
Anything else you need?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nick gets back, we'll tell him we've got another job for him. I like that.
Another job.
I like giving jobs when people aren't here. All right. Otterman Methodist Church.
Yes, sir. My name is Mike Myers.
Thanks for coming, Mike, appreciate it.
I represent this delegation from Otterman United Methodist Church.
Pretty rough-looking crew, by the way.
Yeah.
Pretty rough.
And we would like to make a request to put the nativity scene, the nativity structure on the Courthouse Square this year.
Where would you like to put that?
On the, you know, where Santa Claus is, on the other side, or where it used to be.
Okay.
It's gonna be on the west.
Be on the...
Northwest side.
It'd be on the west side.
Southwest corner or northwest corner?
Northwest.
North, northwest.
By the tree?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, all right. Just so you know, and I can't speak for these guys all, I think they're probably all in the same boat, this has been a very controversial thing.
And we realize that.
And the controversy does not lay in the fact of whether it's worthy or not, the controversy comes into, once you allow any entity to use public property for any display, you have to allow any entity to have any display, although that can be challenged and has been. I did a lot of, did a lot of research on nativity scenes on public property. And actually, the way the Supreme Court sees these is that it is okay, so long as it is presented in a secular way, in that you have the scene, where actually, actually what we are doing is marking a birth date of a historic figure. That's the way the Supreme Court says. It's not promoting any religion, it's not saying you need to be this, or Baptist, or Protestant, or even Protestant or anything else, it's just having the nativity scene of the birth of Christ, and the Supreme Court is just fine with that stuff. There was one instance I showed in the case where it had a banner by the nativity scene which said, "All glory be to God," and they said that was promoting a religion which the state cannot do, so they couldn't do that, but they could have the nativity scenes so long as they didn't have the sign. Now, I know that sounds silly, but that's how these silly things get. We fought this with Billy Creek Villages for one time, so you know, KKK wanted to come out and use Billy Creek Village when I was on the board there to have one of their rallies and meeting. We said, "No, you can't come do that." But we had, we had allowed other people, we allowed the Boy Scouts to come and have a thing there, so they, and they were, they were gonna sue us in federal court, because we allowed the Boy Scouts to do it, we couldn't let our own personal, and they can't, our own personal beliefs get in the fact that we didn't want the KKK there, but we fought it, and they finally dropped out. But they did this kind of thing, you fought. I don't believe we'd be fighting this in this instance, because it is simply a crash, it is simply a nativity scene, as I understand it, replicating the birth of Christ in that, in that day, and I don't think, I know of anybody that have a problem with that, but even if they have had, and the ACLU is famous for that kind of problem, it's gone to Supreme Court, Supreme Court said that is fine. So, one of the things they said when it first came up, they said there is no bright line saying which ones are legal and which ones are illegal. So, they typically say, "Go ahead with what you think is all right," and if it gets challenged, then we'll have to decide if it was in violation of that line or not. So, that's where I am. I personally have no problem with it at all.
But my opinion, fight or no fight, I make a motion, we allow the Otterman Methodist Church to put the nativity scene on the courthouse lawn. And I'll second that.
All in fair sound?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I only have one request.
Sure.
We fight this with Main Street, they have their buildings up there that they put, and those buildings stay there, and stay there, and stay there. Sometimes it's February, almost March before they're gone.
We'll be done, we won't do that.
I appreciate that, and I had no doubt that you would, even though, even though I could tell you guys are trouble, I can tell that. I was sure it would be fine, but there is a problem with Main Street, because those buildings do stay there all of January and most of February.
We'll have ours, and we're gonna put it up tomorrow morning.
Okay.
And I, probably the very first part of January will happen now.
That would be perfect. And I appreciate you being willing to come in and do that for the county. I think it's a good service, and we appreciate it.
Yes, it's a movement that we need to start looking at for our country.
I agree. So, we'll do, we'll do that. Look forward to seeing it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, you need electricity for it, you need lights on it.
I can show you a picture of kind of what it looks like. I dug them out yesterday, just sent them out so you could see what they look like.
Do you need electricity?
Yeah.
Yeah, should have.
You'll need to speak with Don at the, Don Pruner, he's the custodian, and he can arrange for you to have access to an outlet.
Great.
You just take an extension cord, all we're taking, he can have that for you. I'll let him know that you'll be coming, and that's been approved, and you're good to go.
Keep us a little...
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, that's nice.
I'll scroll over.
Yep. All right. Yeah, just talk to Don, and he can get a cord where, he can show you where to plug in, you'll have to supply the cord, but he'll show you where an outlet is, so you can do that.
Well, we thank you so much for listening to us.
Thanks for coming.
Now, do we need to stay in and over?
You have to stay here till the bitter end, yeah, all this stuff. You can't go. We can't go, you can't go.
We're gonna go do our business.
Well, okay. Thanks for coming, guys.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Yep.
I'm gonna get Nick caught up real quick while I leave.
We had a job for you.
I was listening.
Okay.
You want me to draft a letter?
If you would, here's the info on it. What do you need?
I got it.
Okay.
And that's how it's done.
That's how it's done, yep.
Well, I'm so happy, I'm so happy.
All right.
Thank you for coming, I appreciate it.
Thanks, guys. We have a correction on October 17th, commissioner meeting? I don't know what that correction is.
When we changed Columbus Day to be during the Christmas...
Oh, okay.
It changed it to be on Monday now that we are...
I got you. So, we even have a...
So, that'd be Tuesday, Tuesday.
Okay, that'll work. I make the motion that we move the October 17 meeting date to October 18. Second?
Okay, I'll second that.
All in fair sound? All right, you got it.
I'm in good shape.
All right, we have a request here from the assessor. Remember, she had her appointments, we weren't sure about what appointments would be staying or going, and so, she has the following recommendation for commissioner appointments to the Park County Property Tax Department of Appeals, and that would be Josh Soros, James Sinclair, and Michael Strack.
I'll make a motion that we take Katie's recommendations and appoint them to the PETA board for 2022, as she has suggested.
And I'll second that.
All in fair sound?
Aye.
Do you need a list of these, or do you have a list of, cut the content, you got it. Okay. All right, now we have a couple resolutions we have to deal with by the end of the year. One of those has, from the clerk's office, and Henry has requested that we adopt a resolution, just acknowledging that the district lines as presented are accurate before we get the election time. So, what resolution number would we need?
11.
11.
Is there a year in front of that or behind that?
2021.
21, 11.
Okay, so, that's last, okay. Twenty...
Jim, there's a joint resolution from the county council that really pre-marked 11, and then there's one that is pre-marked 12 also.
Oh, there is.
A joint resolution is the...
I have them here for you.
Oh, okay, yeah, for it. So, we need to go 13 on this one then?
Yeah.
Okay, so 13. So, I make the motion that we approve Resolution Number 2021-13, it's a resolution, the Park County Commissioners adopting district lines.
And I'll second that.
All in fair sound?
Aye.
All right. Can you let Henry know that we've adopted that? He's gonna need that, I think, for his file. So, do you have a copy of that? There you go.
Yeah, it's 13.
Oh, I probably need to sign that, did I replace or sign?
Yeah.
So, you've got 11, 12, and...
Does it need to test the resolution list?
Yeah. Well, if I didn't put it on there, then no, but...
It's not on there.
Okay, then no. Actually, go ahead and attest it, sorry. I don't know why I didn't put it on there.
It's hard to get it off, it really is. So, why are you so frustrated? What's up? Cases, just guys, just people doing silly stuff?
It's just silly season, for lack of a better way to put it.
Is it worse after the first of the year, or is it getting better?
So, it'd be better about the time things are bad for Bruce.
Okay. All right.
March-ish, February, March.
All right, let's go ahead and do the one you've got there, the two, these for the broadband distribution?
Right, so 2021-11 would be joint resolution, the commissioners and council awarding premium pay for public safety employees from the American Rescue Plan Fund.
Okay.
So, that would be the first one.
Let's do that separately. If you're okay, Bruce, you have to go ahead and make a motion.
I'll make a motion, we adopt Resolution 2021-11, which is the resolution that awards a premium pay to public safety employees from the American Rescue Plan, and I'll second that.
All in fair sound?
Aye.
Probably place to sign on the ballot. Is that correct, Nick, just me?
Yeah, how it's set up.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, that'd be fine. I think it's set up for both presidents to sign.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
You want it back, or give it to Nick?
It's up to you.
Whoever's gonna get it, John, you sign.
I'll be here.
Okay.
I'll give it to Cindy.
Well, I guess, you want to lower this sign, you want to go ahead and test it?
I'll have her test at the next...
Yeah, next meeting here, go pass it back.
Yeah. Resolution 2021-12 is the joint resolution of border commissions and county council allocating matching funds for around three of the Indiana Next Level Connections broadband grant program.
Want to look at it, or you think...
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion, then we adopt Resolution 2021-12, which again is a joint resolution with the county council allocating what we have given as matching funds for the next level broadband grant.
And I'll second that.
All in fair sound?
Got it.
Spencer, what that is, is we're using some of our art money to, as a matching grant for getting some broadband around the county, and we have actually four different companies, but three active ones who are bidding, bidding or claiming addresses, and then they're getting, some are getting taken back and moved different places. But we've allotted so much of our money, about half of our upper money, in fact, to go as grants, that's what this is all about.
And to go with that, when I have a MOU here for your review, we're not executing that, but it's a MOU to be provided to the providers.
Okay.
If they sign it, then it'll come back to us to be executed.
Okay.
But it's prepared for your review.
What that is, is it's an agreement of how, how much money they're gonna get per address and how that's gonna be, be split up. We didn't want to just give a, give a lump sum to one entity, or to any entity, we want to pay it as a per address thing.
Don't sign the MOU, Jim.
Don't sign it?
Okay.
They'll come back after they do that, okay?
Right, yeah. I don't want them to have a, not that I distrust the providers, but...
I understand.
Just as a practice. You also have the resolution, Park County Commissioners Authorization for Execution Endot Agreement, so have you already done it?
No, that's the next one.
Okay. So, that's the resolutions I have. I also have two ordinances for you to consider.
We, Randy got an email through the highway department that said we had to do that every year for the, for the community crossings grant, that we have to designate one person to sign it, and they're doing it electronically now. So, my recommendation would just be that we make, me as president of the board, we should be the signee on those.
And I'll second that.
All in fair sound?
Aye.
So, if you couldn't go, just make sure you get the minutes that we approved me to sign all of the community crossings grant as requested by Endot, because they'll need a copy of the minutes to show that.
Okay.
Thanks. Randy, do you need a letter or two showing that, or copy of the minutes, if you have to have that?
Yeah, I'd just leave the minutes in the resolution.
Okay. Is that the resolution, bud?
Yeah, this is my copy of the resolution, I don't have to make care of it.
Oh, yeah, 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 here it is.
The original, but okay.
Yeah. So, we can sign one for you today, if you want to take one weekly, we can sign the next one. My copy is heavy on it, so...
I was gonna say, I only see me and Dan standing there. Do you have a, got a draft, excess draft?
Looks like it got cut off.
Oh, man, it left me out, I'm hurting.
I'll resend it to Cindy, and maybe we can print it again.
Maybe we'll take that watermark off, too.
Yeah.
All right, we'll come back to that then.
Looks like that's a printing issue, it's probably just the margins on whatever they print.
Yeah, that's your idea, yep.
Do you want me to keep rolling with my stuff?
Yeah.
I have an ordinance here amending the salary ordinance and employee handbook to add overtime pay for specific Park County public safety positions. So, this is the ordinance for...
Overtime pay, opposed to comp pay?
Right.
Yes, we decided we wanted to do that.
But we have to amend the handbook, and then it has to be addressed in the salary ordinance, too, at some point, every soon.
Is there a number on that one?
For dispatchers, dispatch supervisors, jail officers, jail officer supervisors, that's it.
That's all I remember.
Categories, the two ordinance.
Sorry, I remember. We need more than any kind of amendment.
Yeah, we have 13 to put. So, I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2021-13.
Thank you.
Which again, amends the salary ordinance and the handbook to add... Which again, uh, amends the salary ordinance and the handbook to add overtime pay to certain public positions, uh, and I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And...
Do you see all the signatures?
Yeah, it's got two places for us to sign, I wonder if that's what you want.
Same day, same meeting, and then.
I got you, I got you, I see it.
I think that has to come back to the Lord, yep.
Yeah, it's gotta be a testament, and it's gotta be, uh, published in the paper also.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I called you over, I apologize, I'm used to Lord being seven.
Um, next one I have is the ordinance prohibiting the unauthorized alteration of county property, this is the one we talked about sometime back, about the covered bridge. And whereas, not necessarily that it's criminal activity we're hoping to stop, we're just hoping to stop unauthorized modifications.
Paint, whatever they want to paint them, or whatever.
Hand painting lights, or different things, you just need to get approval to do that. So this is set up for approval also, same day, same meeting, so you need two signatures on it.
That's fourteen?
Yes, that will be fourteen. So I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance twenty twenty-one fourteen, which is, uh, an ordinance prohibiting unauthorized alteration to public property.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. You're gonna be busy, Nick, you're gonna be good.
I got one more, but it, it printed out with the margins messed up, so I'm trying to find it where I would nail it.
Okay.
But that's all I have for now.
You're probably getting scared to see my, my text messages come up, aren't you?
I'm frazzled by you mainly, Jim.
Yeah, I know, that's my goal in life.
That's all I have for right this second.
Okay. All right, we have a notice on the Army here. Won't miss that one. All right, so we have a note here from the Department of the Army. Working on lake projects, is dealing with the National Historic Preservation Act. They're just developing, a party less of people to be notified of anything maybe coming up, so we're just notifying S O R on that. So, all right.
Do you want me to just pack it, or?
No, it's, we leave that in the, in the office.
Cover, okay.
Yeah. And if you'd like, I can notify them, let them know, we would like to know, be a consultant party in development of P A, which means, because their startup site does the same thing, they just notify us of what changes they're doing, what they're looking to be doing. We also have noticed that, uh, the, uh, building Carolyn Davis' house on Jackson Street is, uh, has been nominated to be added to the National Register for Historic Places. And so they're just notifying that that is going to be, uh, be considered. That is a two-pronged sword sometimes, uh, it's kinda neat to be registered, boy, it sure does limit what you can do to the house if you come by yourself, as you know, you've got all kinds of codices that you have to deal with, and, uh, so a lot of people wish they were on the National Register, the prestige of that, but, boy, come by yourself. Wish they weren't on it for that, yeah. All right. And then, uh, just a notice from the, uh, from I D M about, uh, um, Scott Pitt.
Is that the forty-one North project?
Yes. It's just a permanent renewal. All right. Let me see what else I have, I had, I have a bunch of things here to... I will be gone in January, just to make sure you guys knew, we talked about that a minute ago, I will ask Cindy if she will get, uh, Zoom set up, so I can attend those meetings that, uh, that way. And so, since you guys are okay with that, we can do that, and according to state law still, as long as you have, you can see directly and hear directly, you are, uh, you're, you're part of a forum, so that's okay.
You're okay, because you have two in person also.
Yeah, they're made of form, anyway, yeah, I just didn't want to intrude on them by not being there, but I wouldn't mind seeing what's going on, I'm sure you'll have questions on me, because, you know, someone's knowledge and wisdom.
We might have some technical issues getting on there.
Yeah, maybe, maybe lose, lose connection here somewhere along the line, yeah, yeah. That's all I got, so, okay. Do you guys have any news?
Nope.
All right. Sheriff's not here, so, Randy?
How you doing today?
We're doing good, how are you doing?
All right. Sunny day today, it's really nice.
Has the, uh, road estimator guy come see you yet about getting those?
Yeah, we went out this morning.
Did we fall within our range, oh, yeah, I got numbers probably.
No, I haven't got them.
Yeah, okay, good, I'm glad you got that, doing great.
Yep, we went out this morning, about ten o'clock. This is, uh, document we need to sign. It's for, uh, state use on nonprofit or nonprofit educational organization, organization use. Uh, that's for, uh, our fuel bed.
Okay. That's what you need from us on that?
Just need to signature.
Just saying that it's for non, nonprofit use, okay. Do they still die tax-free diesel fuel? I heard they quit that, did they, they still die?
Our system dies, I don't know.
I heard they were quitting that, I didn't know how they ever forced that, they quit it doing that.
Make a motion if you have Bruce. Well, I can. Uh, I'm just gonna make motion that we sign a certificate, uh, of state use for, uh, nonprofit, uh, organizations, uh, from the standpoint of, by the petroleum.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And I also have a, how to cycle check for Lucas Calm, they got the roof all done on the.
Good.
Bridge, uh, Sim Smith Bridge. And the amount of nineteen thousand two hundred dollars.
Yeah, then you okay?
It's, it's, it'll pass.
It'll pass, all right. Kind of slack, slack, I know, yeah.
And we went down, we already done the bottom part, like one side of the side.
Oh, did you?
Lot, some of it maybe, yeah.
I got a check here for you, too, for a chip and seal, you done for me, so. Hand it over, Bruce, hand it to you.
Thank you.
Yep. Get that out of my account and into yours before, into the year.
That's the one I just signed, is that the same thing?
The same thing, just.
Oh, you want another copy of it, okay. That it?
But next thing, I'll make a motion that we approve an out of, a cycle check to Lucas Calm for nineteen thousand two hundred dollars for the, uh, bridge work that he did.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
The project.
Oh.
Will be asked.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Sure, Bruce, you got enough, you got.
And just for the record, that check I gave Randy was for chip and seal on the road in front of a piece of my property.
Okay. That's something we normally use, that's not a surprise to anybody.
No.
To most people, it's not.
I understand. Okay. So what we got?
Sure.
There's resolution authorizing you to sign.
We did make a motion on that.
Yeah, we made a motion.
It just adds the typos in it, that fixes.
I had to fix the.
Okay, I got you.
I was trying to think whether we'd done a motion.
Yes, we did. Yeah, the, the watermark's on it. It left me off.
I left you off on purpose, actually.
I know.
It was because it was giving you authority to sign, is why I left you off, now that I remember.
You missed your mortgage on there, didn't you?
Said something about that, yeah.
Said you could pay it out.
I'm responsible for paying it.
Yeah.
That it?
You read the fine print, right?
I, I always do, I remember how you guys work. All right, Randy, what else you got?
Well, uh, brush cutting, we got Farnell Road.
Great.
Twelve hundred east done, from Farnell Road up to the county line. And working on three hundred south right now, and we get that one done, we're going down Graves Road and ten fifty east, and hopefully go to Colblass. And we been patching some. Working on a thousand east.
Okay.
And I did get calls, run on these new batch of roads. And there's gonna be, uh, three colors gonna be pretty expensive, I've got them ordered.
Great.
Don't remember how much they were, but.
They're all good road improvements, they're all good stuff.
Yep.
One of them's gonna be a ten foot, a fifty-five foot, I think, long pipe. And then two eighty-four inch pipes, fifty foot long. And we'll get those electric first in here.
What are we gonna do about that spot there by Laird Thompson, where the road's always wet, where that pond drains across the road, what are we gonna do there to make that, so it's not a swamp hole?
Well, he says there's a buried pipe down there in Little Ways.
Okay.
And somebody took the riser off of it.
Ah, okay.
So we're gonna ditch down through there, just see if we can find it.
Okay.
And if not, we may just go ahead and ditch it out, and if he wants to put a pipe in, he can pay for that.
Okay.
And we'll do the work for him, but.
Right.
Or we'll just leave it open in there.
Okay.
I did have a question for you, too, do you have any idea what happened to that little section on Jeffers Ford Road, it sloughed off.
Yeah, it evidently had a little dirt on it.
That's why I wondered, the oil, tack coat or something, because just one small, and it just, like, it just slid off.
Yeah, it did.
The new blacktop.
Yeah.
Really, it didn't, it didn't even longer than this room and one, one road width wide, and it just looks like the new blacktop, that's the only place on that whole road.
I'll be, so what do you do about that?
Well, we'll just have to repave that section.
Yeah. That's not even truckload, it's, you ain't even have to haul the.
Ah, interesting.
Have to machine back down there, but it just.
That, or we might be able to take grader down there.
Greater patch and wedge it, that probably will.
We need to wait till we get a roller back to roll it, so.
How are we, equipment wise, everything up, going, trucks all going now?
Well, I still got one truck at Lafayette, waiting on, they put a new engine in it.
Lafayette's always been a trouble, hasn't it?
Yeah. And it is one of the, one of those trucks that we had the most trouble with.
Yeah, okay.
But they, we put a new engine in it, and the rod went through it, well, they didn't know, he said it hit the computer, so it messed it up, and waiting on the computer.
Wow.
And then I got one down Tarrell, with the game pens. And, and we got one in the shop, we're changing transmission fluid and stuff, hopefully that'll take care of it.
All right. How many trucks and drivers are we gonna have for snow, if we got snow the, next week or two?
I think, uh, fourteen trucks. Thirteen trucks.
How many drivers?
Got one.
Got a driver for every truck?
Yeah, should have, yeah.
Great, so you're full then?
I think I'm down one person.
Okay.
Right now.
Okay.
I just hardened another one a week ago.
Are you getting more applications than you were before, you're getting some anyway?
Uh, I've got a few, not a whole lot.
Okay.
Pretty much been hard, and soon as I put an application in, I don't know, if they're halfway decent.
Okay.
I had one off for about two weeks with COVID, now he's back, he come back today.
We just okayed that check for the guy that had the C D all that he paid for, so that'd be.
Yeah, he, he needs to get, this other one's scheduled, so I get three trucks.
All right.
Okay. Okay.
Thanks.
Have a good Christmas, Randy.
Ah, you too, thanks, Randy, I got some stuff out in the truck for you.
Oh, good, good. Little, little graft, I like a little graft once in a while, so, okay. Anything, uh, you guys got any other old business, or anything you need to do? Yes, ma'am.
Always, I know.
What you got?
Uh, just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that our Health and Needs Assessment Survey is active. Um, if you follow Partnership Park County on Facebook, the survey is accessible there, would love for everybody to fill that out. Um, you'll probably also see it in the local newspaper, and anyone else that is in our steering committee has shared that, um.
Is that shareable, that I can go there and send it out to the?
If you, yes, if you go to our Facebook page, you could share that, absolutely, I appreciate that, we'd like to get, you know, as many responses, and this is for people that live in Park County and work in Park County. So you don't necessarily have to be a resident to fill it out. But we appreciate as much publication of.
Sure.
That out there as possible.
Okay.
And it will be open through the end of January.
Yeah. I, uh, would like approval from us, have no numbers or anything yet, but we talked about how one of the things that we're gonna need with the ARPA funds, and we agreed at a meeting, consensus was, of course we need that, was a website. But I don't want to wait too long to start talking to someone about designing that, because I have to have more than one, one estimate to do that. So, uh, I'd make the motion that, uh, uh, we authorize us to go ahead and start seeking, uh, seeking bids on developing a, a, uh, professional website for the county, yeah.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Well, I can get at least two, it's gonna be expensive, but we need, my vision is, and we have plenty of time to think about this, my vision is to have, of course, this main page, but then have a page for every department, and then, then off those pages, whatever they have to link to, they can, so, and that, the tough part then, you would have to let each department edit their own as they, as they needed, and keep up with current stuff and information, we'd have to have on the main page, uh, links going to the Commission of Visitors Commission, and how to pay taxes, and those kind of things, and they would direct them to the correct page, get taxes paid, or assessments done, that kind of thing, so. It's gonna be complicated, but that, there are some good ones out there I've seen, so a couple counties have really nice ones, so, if we can contact you, get theirs, we could just do that same type of thing.
Jim, are you gonna put together a request for proposal then with all of that?
Yes.
As you take your bids.
Yes, yep. And, and if that is something you want to do, or get involved with that, I'm fine with that, because you're the one who knows how to do that stuff, so.
I, I could draft something for you to look at, if you'd like.
And we probably need to have some design ideas going into that request for.
It's very helpful, and that way everybody's bidding on the same pitch.
Yeah, and, and they'll still want to make changes on that, but at least we're all talking about the same set of apple, apples of apples, instead of whatever, so we get bid on this, and then we may want to change as we go, because new ideas will come up, and we just need it workable. All right, so you and I will talk, we'll get that going, um. And next meeting, the first one in January, I won't be here, I would like to have, um, Zoom set up if we could, if you got that room in your calendar, and make that, make that happen, I appreciate it.
Probably do that.
Okay. That's all I got. Spencer, anything else come to your mind, since you've been here?
Nope, appreciate you letting me use your app, it deserves.
You're a patient, tolerant man, these things aren't very exciting. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn, I'll second it.
Thanks, guys.